Bit of hacky this morning, so I figured I'd I'd just stay here today and it's it's good.
Yeah, it's really convenient. We didn't have to go down the hall or anything.
Yeah. So how's your day been?
Good. How about you?
Yeah, well, certainly not bad, that's for sure. I I work this morning and and by and large, I I'm just in the office here as well. So. And but it was, yeah, you know, it was, we had a bit of a family gathering yesterday. You know, we have a small family, so there was only about six of us here with with some kids, but. Anyway, it was it was good to see the little kids over. So we don't get to see them that often, right?
Yeah. Well, that's good. I have I have the amendment for the which I'm thinking through, but for that e-scooter thing.
Okay, yeah. No, I think I think there's room merit in that. Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, we'll see what happens. But I mean, I'm just kind of, I'm gonna send it forward when I just finish working it through my head, but I just think having those predefined locations, I think it will really help us get a better understanding whether or not the pilot program is widely accepted, because there is a pretty high number of negative responses, and I think part of it is those drop offs.
Well, what I heard, I I never used them, right? So I don't know what it like, do you just go until the money runs out? If that's the case, it's kind of, you know, I don't know how that works. So I never even picked one up, so I don't know how heavy they are. But I got to tell you, the closest I had as an experience to an e-scooter was not a was not a rental. It was a personally owned one. And it was a it was young. It was actually, it was two young ladies, I suspect, you know, thirteen, fourteen. And they were really good on them, you know, and they were just zipping around and and but so I'm I'm going on my daily walk and all of a sudden one comes whipping behind me and I, of course, I got to hear phones in, I'm listening to whatever. And all of a sudden, here she goes whipping by me. Not that she came close to me, but it startled me a little bit, right? And but I wish I could write it like that.
Yeah, I don't know. I just know that that's one of the complaints, that's something we can try to hopefully address. Like, I'm thinking there's a simple way, if the safe money runs out, if you have drop off locations, you'll say you have exactly amount of money to get to this location. Like, they'll say your time has run out, you now have five minutes to get to this location at the end.
Yeah, yeah, I, yeah, no, that I'm sure there's a way to do it for sure. Because, yeah, it there's nothing quite so ugly as just seeing them dropped off all over the place, right?
Yeah, that's the complaint we're getting. I mean, they're not doing it right now, because there's nobody, there's it's winter. But I mean, in the I know in the fall, people were surprised, as I was as well, just seeing them kind of scattered everywhere. Especially considering how many companies are doing it. There's a lot now in St. Albert of just physical scooters, so I think that it somehow needs to be harnessed. So we'll see what happens. I mean, either way, it's all good, but I'm getting it together, so I'm gonna put it out in advance, so admin knows that I'm talking about, and that way they're ready to answer questions. Because I I don't want this to be like, I don't have any answers. And then it doesn't pass because we don't have answers. I want to be able to know how we can do this, and if the wording needs to change.
Well, in the, you know, if there's a lot of companies coming to St. Albert and want to participate, there's got to be money in it. So I don't even know how much it costs to use the thing, so. And if there's money in it, then they can spend a little bit in keeping our community looking decent.
I think it wasn't cheap. It was like thirty dollars for half an hour or something. Like, it's not cheap.
Oh, I didn't, oh.
That's what I I could be totally wrong, but that's what I thought I remembered. I've never, I haven't bought them either, but somebody told me that that's what it was, I think, a while ago. Yeah.
I don't know. I'd hate to, you know, that's that's pretty expensive to break my leg. I don't know. I'm sure I'd catch on to it eventually. I'm just not sure I'm interested in it.
I think like three to four broken bones, and you'd have it. Like, that's math, Wes, because I believe in you.
I appreciate that. Oh, I see everybody went down to council chambers.
Yeah, that's why I was like you and I have it easy. We just had to slip over. Everyone else had to jog.
Yeah, I should have. I should change my background or something and said, yeah, I had to jog to my other office.
That was pretty funny. Get a picture like you in your car, sorry.
Yeah.
That would be pretty cool, you know, because you got your convertible. Get just a photo of just your convertible with you in it, and plant yourself in it as the background. Hey, Carrie, hey, Charlie. We are literally just talking.
Yeah, we're just having a good time chatting. Your point about the the convertible, I had my six year old in the back and like, so I just drove around our cul-de-sac, because there's you can't really get a child seat in there. And he didn't want me to go too fast, because the the engine makes a noise, so he thought he was he was a little scared. But once he got used to it, what he did is he just looked out the window and and I are over the top, but I thought he was just looking, you know, to see the the street go by. But no, he was looking in the rearview mirror, because he could see himself. And I said, what are you doing? He says, so I like the way my hair blows in the wind. And I says, you're six years old, you're not supposed to be thinking like that. But I thought it was kind of cute, just.
You're just jealous, because he has more hair than you have.
This is true enough, yeah. Yeah, this is true. Like the way my hair blows in the wind. There you go. We're being no matter what age we're at, so.
Or they all, is everyone in seats? We sort of, they had this one person that was telling me that, like, their three or four year old was kept like looking up and then blinking and looking up and blinking, and they're like, what are you, what are you doing? Because it was like, and because I'm trying to see my eyelashes. So you know, just.
That's good. First carrier. Let me let me get my coffee.
Wes, I thought you were gonna be here today. I brought that special drink for you.
Yeah. Well, I always like to be there, but today I felt maybe you guys shouldn't be getting my coffee, so.
This probably, we could have put this in your coffee, and you would have felt a lot better.
Ah, there you go. Save it for me, Ken.
Hey, Carrie, while you're here and we're waiting, is there a reason why we had the special council meeting and we didn't just address these next Tuesday? Was it time specific that we had to get these surpluses approved? McCary Forbes?
Yes, this was all time specific. Last Monday was too quick, and the twenty second was too late, given the audit. So so we've had to have done this in the past. The last couple of years, the timing worked out a bit better than this year.
Okay, thank you.
All right, is everyone ready to get started? Okay, so we'll call, oops, it fell off, to order a special council meeting for Monday, February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, Valentine's Day, calling the meeting to order. And at the beginning of the meeting, we have everyone here with Counselor Jolly, Counselor Killit, Counselor Mackay, and myself in chambers and everyone else on Zoom. And I have a motion to adopt the agenda. Thank you, Councilor Mackay. Go ahead.
That the February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two special council meeting agenda be adopted as presented.
Perfect. Help the vote.
Here, Erin, do you want to raise hand, or do you want me to print it in the?
Brittany, how do you want the? Put it, put yes or no in the chat.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilor Broadhead. Okay, sorry, I missed it. That motion carried unanimously. All right, flashes very fast. All right. Mr. Hiltz, your corporate quarterly report, which is essentially a wrap up of the year, Q four. So, thank you. Go ahead. There you go, I see it. Mr. Hiltz, we're having a hard time hearing you. Is your mic, I see that the light's on, but maybe try the one beside you.
Test, test, the better?
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Okay. So just just those point of clarification is this information takes us through to December thirty first of two thousand and twenty-one. And some of the projects have have been advanced more within the last six weeks. So this report is administration's main mechanism of reporting to council and the community about the city strategic plan and financial position. The Q four report highlights work accomplished from September to the end of December, two thousand and twenty-one. We have directors present today to answer any specific project questions, and following this presentation, finance will highlight the operating and capital carryforwards and year end surplus and reserve transfers. The COVID nineteen pandemic is still affecting operations of the city. We continue to see adjustments to services and a response to public health orders. The effects of these will be shown in the financial updates later in the presentation. Our presentation begins with the status of the major initiatives in progress to address council strategic plan. I will highlight a few accomplishments and initiatives that have been delayed or currently on hold. This will follow by an overview of the financial position of quarter four, two thousand and twenty-one. So reporting on thirty-two total projects, twenty-five of them are on track, three are at risk, three are off track, and some haven't started yet, or one hasn't started yet. So at the, so basically, the one that hasn't started yet, we will be waiting to reestablish council priority at the strategic planning coming up in March, and that project is the Net Zero Pilot Project. So on track, we have the annexed lands of Sturgeon County. And this is based on following provincial government's approval. And right now, we're working on the transition of annexed lands and the bylaws that come into effect with that. Under investment strategy, we have the Lakeview Business District Area Structure Plan. Under collaborative economic development, council received a highlight at the last council meeting. Transportation plans and initiatives. As of quarter four, we're on track with. Transportation system strategy, active transportation plan, transportation network improvement, added implementation, and transportation safety plan implementation. Under revenue generating, council received an update on the solar farm at the last council meeting. And that was looking at, from looking at it from a commercial solar farm, a municipal owned or hybrid. And council asked more information to come forward on the hybrid option at the May seventh meeting. And public enhanced public engagement will be again in quarter two of two thousand and twenty-two. And we have the long range planning strategy. One of the ones that we have developed to date has been in green environmental strategy. These projects are the previous master plans for each department, and we'll be working through that process and in their alignment to the municipal development plan. So at risk, we have strategies for entrepreneurial ventures. This one will now become, will have some traction to it, as we do have a full complement of staff in that area who will be able to move this this strategy or this initiative forward. We have intermunicipal partnerships. Those have been, this were put on hold due to the election. And now we are starting to have those conversations again with our municipal partners and moving these forward. Secure ownership of rural road two sixty. We are still in the, we're still working through the land transfer process with Rohit. So we're off track. We've enhanced or integrated and coordinated social services network. We are, basically, the project plan has been commenced, and we're in the process of bringing in additional staff on to be able to help with that initiative. Waste minimization strategy, COVID restrictions are delaying public education and engagement and waste energy pilots. So this is one of the projects that has been taken off the books for at the January thirty first council meeting. As we move into the financial summary, the plan provides preliminary year end position as of quarter four of two thousand and twenty-one. So we, so basically, for on the revenue side, we've basically achieved ninety percent of the budget. One point, one hundred and sixty-four point two million dollars. On the expense side, one hundred and sixty point two million, which is ninety-three percent of the budget. So this basically allow, leaves us with three point nine surplus. And that's mainly due to vacancies, facility closures, and delayed projects mainly due to the pandemic. And this also includes the city has spent one million in COVID specific spending and is covered by the two thousand and twenty-one surplus. This chart identifies the progress status of all municipal capital projects. In total, ninety-five percent of the projects are currently in progress or complete. Under updates on specific capital projects are communicated through the city website throughout the year. Under utility operations, utility highlights for two thousand and twenty-one, the city recognizes forty-three point three million dollars in revenue and thirty-three point five million dollars in expenses in utilities budgeted. This results in a seven hundred thousand dollar lower reserve transfer than budgeted. This was due to the suspension of sewer investigation services due to COVID and additional staff that's required for for the additional staffing required for the recycling depot, also as a result of COVID restrictions. This chart identifies the progress of status of utility capital projects, which shows seventy-nine percent of the projects currently in progress are completed. Again, the city's website updates specific capital projects throughout the year. So in summary, we have three point nine million forecasted for surplus. It also. For two thousand and twenty-one, the city has realized a surplus of three point nine million dollars to staff vacancies, delayed projects, and facility closures. The city's investments returns are higher than the posted T bills and bond rates. And the city continues to contribute to reserve, and the current debt limits are below city limits. Again, this information will be highlighted in the presentations coming in the financial reviews later in this meeting. And so this this includes the report on quarterly four updates. Administration recommends that council receive the Q four corporate quarter report as information and be happy to answer any questions.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Hiltz. So we'll open it up for questions. I thought Counselor Mackay to start.
Yeah, this really quick in relation to the Range Road two sixty lands. Is there anything that council should be concerned about, or is this just regular negotiations? Or anything that you can say outside of going in camera that relates to just, is this just normal processes in place and this just taking a little bit more time than we anticipated? I'm having a hard time hearing you for some reason. I don't know why.
So this one's better. So making me jump back and forth, I was just gonna say that these are results of just, I think, prudence on both sides. And and it is with our lawyers right now, but if Mr. Flora would like to provide any additional insight publicly, or as Mr. or as Counselor Mackay has indicated, we can go in count, we can go in camera for a much more robust discussion.
I can I can offer a couple of perhaps insights here. So as has been pointed out, this is a fairly complicated transaction, which involves on the part of the developer. Some, how can I put it, some some delicate issues of income tax. And so it's been very difficult for them to work through, but they really would have been working hard at it. We have just, within the last two weeks, received a new draft of a land donation agreement. You heard that, right? Land donation agreement. So we're working, working through that. I'm very hopeful that things will be to the point where we can actually execute an agreement, although the actual transfer of the land, again, it's not entirely clear yet. It may not actually happen until next year again for tax reasons. We're trying to work with the developer and try to be sure that they get the biggest uplift out of this. And let's face it, it's a large, it's a large donation of land to the city, so it behooves us to work with them as much as we can. So that's where it now stands. I don't know if you if you want more detail, I would want to go in camera to provide it. But I think what I've just said is, I'm hopeful, we'll give you the.
David, I'm gonna interrupt you, and this is totally not your fault, but for about the last two minutes, maybe, we couldn't hear anything here in chambers. So start again. We could see you just talking away, but if you wouldn't mind just repeating that, that would be helpful. Sorry, just, just, you know, David, we heard everything over here. So Zoom people heard everything, just so you weren't talking in vain. I heard it all.
Okay, well, I I'm used to talking in vain. There's no, no problem with that. So I take it then that, can everyone hear me now?
We can, yes.
Okay, so those who couldn't hear before, the ones who who failed their lip reading course, I presume? Okay, so I'll try, I'll try to summarize what I said before, and those who heard me before, please, please don't jump all over me if you think I say something differently. But really, what I was trying to point out is that it's a complicated transaction to some extent for the city, but mostly for the developer. The developer has to balance some important considerations involving Alberta environmental protection. And as you, as you know, there's a former landfill site that's involved in all of this. And they also have to balance some some delicate income tax considerations. So in recognition of that, it's taken them a little while to work through all of some of these details. We've been patient, and I think rightly so, because this is a very large donation of land for the city. So it behooves us to work with them, and we've been doing that. The good news is that we've just, within the last, I think it's probably less than two weeks ago now that we've received a draft of a land donation agreement that has come from the developers. So they've been working very hard on it. We're analyzing that now. It may not result in an actual transfer of land until next year. Again, for relatively complicated tax reasons. But they're they're willing to enter into the agreement much sooner than that. We just have a few little details to work through. So I'm very hopeful it'll happen in the very near future. And as far from my perspective, things are very much on track.
Thank you. That's all the information I needed.
Good explanation. Thank you. Any more questions for either Mr. Hiltz, Mr. Flora, or even on the financials, or do we want to wait till we get to the next agenda item to do financial questions? All right, let's move on then. That's probably not a bad idea. So the next thing on our agenda is the operating and capital carryforwards and completed projects, and we've got Ann Victor from finance.
Your worship, if you want to approve that as for information.
There's a motion there? Go ahead. Who, oh, Counselor Jolly's got her hand up. Thanks, Natalie.
The attachment to the February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two agenda report entitled Corporate Quarterly Report, quarter four, two thousand and twenty-one, be received as information.
Any comments? Nope. Short and sweet. That's my comment. All right, seeing no one else jumping in, no hands up online, so I'll just call for the vote. And that motion passes unanimously. Okay, sorry, now we can go on to Ann. Ooh, nice background, Ann.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for attending this special meeting, so we can meet our year end deadlines. So as part of the year end process and adherence to council policy, any operating or capital project that has not yet been completed is brought forward as a carry forward to ensure funding is available to complete the projects, ensure that the commitments can be made without impacting tax or future year budgets. We just wanted to let council know, based on feedback, the last time we came to council, we did add a column in the carry forward columns, a reason for carry forward, for some more transparency to assist in council with the carry forwards. We added that column for more information this year. So I'll start on the municipal capital carryforwards enclosed projects. Those are detailed on pages five to ten of your agenda. So we have one hundred and sixty-nine capital projects. One hundred and thirteen of those projects are being carried forward with an approved budget of two twenty-seven point eight million. This is a net decrease of three point three million. Within this net decrease, there is some increases to existing capital projects that are being detailed, which are being asked, and these are detailed on the bottom of page eight. Two that we want to highlight for council is, one of them is four hundred and eight thousand is being asked increase for the human resource information systems project, and that's to enable integration within the existing systems. This will result in further process efficiencies and minimizing data entry across the city for staff. Also, we're asking for a five hundred thousand increase due to changes in provincial requirements in relation to the Alberta First Responder Responders Radio Communication System. And this is inclusive, including a tower upgrade that was being requested and was not in the original scope of the project. So fifty-six of the one hundred and sixty-nine projects are being closed with an eight hundred and seventy-one thousand surplus, which is recommended to be uncommitted within the respective funding sources, and that's for future council approved projects. And then we'll move on to utility carryforwards enclosed projects. Those are listed on detailed on pages eleven to thirteen of your agenda. So those include fifty-six utility capital projects. Forty-five of those are being carried forward with a budget of fifty-seven point six million. And eleven projects are to be closed with a project surplus of sixty-eight point seven thousand, which will be are being requested to return back to the respective funding source. And then in regards to operating pro, operating carryforwards and completed projects with balances, those are on pages fourteen and fifteen. The request is for seven million is being carried forward to ensure adequate funding is available for the operating carryforwards and to ensure that commitments can be funded and carried forward. Of this, three point two million is carrying over with from within the two twenty-one budget, and three point two from prior years carried forward. And this also includes forty thousand related to utility projects and initiatives. And also during the year, the city completed a number of operating carryforwards funded from reserves. And of the completed projects, there was a net residual savings of three hundred and twelve thousand, which requires council approval to uncommit. And we just wanted to highlight that staffer in attendance to address any questions that council may have.
All right, thank you. Yeah, we have a lot of staff here, so that's awesome. So I'll open it up to questions. Start with everyone at home this time. Counselor Romansky, any questions? Oh, Counselor Broadhead's got his hand up. You can start, Wes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you. This is always an interesting presentation. And yeah, thanks for the information. Just one question, and and it it's right at the top of the page on the municipal capital projects. And my question is, this is around the railroad safety enhancement, and there's a comment in there around. in there around design work in progress for Meterview Drive. Funding is linked to the rail safety improvement grants fund, which we received, and it has a deadline of March 31st of this year. Are we at risk of not using our grant funding? Or are we going to be able to expend it without having given money back?
Through you, Madam Mayor.
Here, I was actually just thinking, Mr. Schick, you should just get a chair in chambers. No matter what topic, you generally have to jump in, so go ahead.
Thank you very much through you, Madam Mayor. No, we are on track. The, the initial phase for this rail safety improvement grant is associated with design only, so we're not at risk of losing funds towards construction. That would be a separate grant application. And we're approaching substantial completion for the design work, which will put us in a good position to then move forward with additional grant considerations. But short answer to that is no, we don't believe we're at risk in terms of our application for granting use of the funds.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Council Broadhead, for your watchful eye on that continuing project. How about Council Hughes, any questions?
Yeah, I don't know if you can answer it in public or not, but the, okay, hold on, let me get to the right page. Rivercrest Lift Station Rehab, it says moving into legal action is, I'm going to look at Mr. LaFleur if he's allowed it, what we're allowed to say on this, but I wasn't aware that we, unless I missed it, about legal action for this, because it looks like we're, hmm, okay, actual is 1.8, budget two, but this is legal action. So is it a land issue or I'm, am I missing it? And you told me and I forgot.
All right, you'll have to, you'll have to give me a moment. Which, which item is that again?
It's utility capital projects, carryforward 416442. It's the top of the page, I think, is the first one.
The Rivercrest Lift Station Rehab.
Okay, yeah, that. I, I think that may refer to a legal, legal matter that has already been resolved. I don't know for sure, though. If there's anyone on the call that can shed more light on that. Again, if, if it's details of litigation or something, we would have to go in camera, but I don't believe that's the case. Is there anyone else here that can, who can enlighten us more?
I can start.
Go to you, Donnie.
Sorry, through the chair to Councilor Hughes, the project is substantially completed. There were some subcontractor issues that came into play during the construction, so we are in, in the last stages of resolving that with, through the legal. So that's essentially what that status of the project is at.
Okay, I, I recall now what's being referenced. Yeah, this, these are fairly, fairly minor contractor claims. It's nothing, it's nothing that'll put the project at risk with the timeline at all.
Thank you.
Only question you had, Council Hughes? All right. And I see no one jumping into the conversation here in chambers. So there's a long list of motions. Thank you, Council Jolly, go ahead.
That the 2021 municipal capital carryforward amount of 224.5 million, which includes a 3.2 million net budget decrease is detailed in the document entitled Municipal Capital Projects Carryforward Be Approved, that the residual balances remaining in the 2021 municipal capital closed projects and the amount of 872,000 is detailed in the document entitled Municipal Capital Projects Closed Be Uncommitted Within Their Respective Funding Resources, that the 2021 utility capital, utility capital carryforward amount of 57.6 million is detailed in the document entitled Utility Capital Projects Carryforward Be Approved, that the residual balances remaining in the 2021 utility capital completed projects and the amount of 68.7,000 is detailed in the document entitled Utility Capital Projects Closed Be Uncommitted Within Their Respective Funding Sources, that the 2021 municipal and utility operating carryforward amount of 7 million is detailed in the document entitled Operating Carryforwards Be Approved, and that reserve balances be updated to reflect the realized net savings from completed municipal and utility operating projects as detailed in the attachment titled Completed Operating Projects With Residual Balances.
Awesome. Any opening comments? That was good.
Okay. I was just looking to ledge to make sure I didn't miss anything.
You said it all right. That was a long one. Any comments?
Just, just thanks for this. I, I know this is, you know, we had to get this wrapped up at kind of an awkward time, so hopefully we can figure out something a little bit better next year, but kind of shows all the work that goes into the budget and making sure that things flow the way they should. So thanks to everyone involved in this.
Perfect. Anyone at home have any comments? None? Call for the vote. Voting's closed, and that passes unanimously. All right, there's one more, which is what we're going to do with the year-end surplus. So, Annie, Brenda, you're taking this one?
Yep, I'm taking this one. Can you hear me? Everybody can hear me okay? I know there's been some issues. Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor and members of council. I'm here this afternoon to present the city's 2021 preliminary year-end position and to make recommendations for the distribution of the surplus. As you've heard, the city is currently reporting an estimated $3.9 million surplus, which is approximately 2.6% variance from the 2021 approved budget of 171 million. A detailed analysis of all of the variances within each department can be found in the fourth quarter report, which was presented earlier and is included in today's agenda package. Administration is recommending transferring the $3.9 million surplus into the stabilization reserve. On December 31st, 2021, the stabilization reserve had an uncommitted balance of approximately 975,000. With some 2022 council-approved motions, this balance is now 720,000. So by transferring the $3.9 million into the stabilization reserve, this will bring the balance to 4.6 million. If council would like to make some alternate recommendations for transferring the surplus funds, we would ask that you make an amended motion today so that we can finalize the surplus position for the year-end audit. Thank you, and I will take any questions.
So let me just, you want motions today?
Yeah.
I don't have any, but generally we're giving, given a little bit of time to think about alternatives for the surplus. Because the motion, pretty, it's pretty, it just says, doesn't actually have a number here, right? So.
Oh, sorry. We would like the whole amount of the surplus, the approximately 3.9 million, transferred to the stabilization reserve. Because the balance in the stabilization reserve is so low and the operating surplus is really the main funding source for the stabilization reserve, that's why we're recommending putting all of it in there.
No, and I, I'm sorry, Brenda, I have no, no issues with that. It's just normally we're given a little bit of time, but I'm, I'm fine with it as it is. I'll just open it up to questions.
Okay.
Yeah. Council Mackay.
Yeah, thanks, Brenda, and I appreciate that. And maybe you don't have this information in front of you, or maybe you can access it quickly, but in a typical year, I mean, I realize you've given us numbers in relation to what our current stabilization fund is at. In a current year, in a, in a normal year, let's put parentheses around normal, how, how much would we access the stabilization reserve fund?
It looks like, well, just in this past year, if I'm reading this correctly, we've, we've used about 3.8 million out of the stabilization reserve. Different, different projects, you know, Solar Farm, Business Resiliency, Edmonton Global, Waste to Energy, but that was put back in. So, so there are a lot of draws on the stabilization reserve throughout the year. If, was there something else, Ann?
And I can, I can add to that, too. We did a five-year trend of the information, of numbers pulled out of the stabilization reserve, and the five-year average has been 1.8 million that we've needed each year, on average.
Yeah, thank you. That was my follow-up question. So on average, we take about 1.8. And something you said, Brenda, in relation to the waste of energy, now that council's made the decision to, to put that money back in, does this current amount, the $700,000, include that amount that we put back in? Or is that just an accounting process that'll come back in, in 2022?
The waste to energy, so return of funds is going to be 944,000. It's an accounting process. It will do in 2022.
All right. So I mean, basically, we have that on top of the existing amount of approximately 700 and some odd thousand, correct?
I know, that would include it. So in the, in your council package, on page three of my agenda report, I've got a reconciliation there that shows our December 31 balance of 974,000. And then we have some 2022 amendments, which includes the waste-to-energy return of funds. So we have a current, does that make sense? Yeah?
No, I see it, I seen, I saw it. I just wanted to make confirmation. Just wanted to make sure the numbers, and it was just something that either I heard or misheard, and I just wanted to be clarified that the numbers that you had in your report was what I was, was what it's, what I heard, so.
What you understood. Okay, yes.
I appreciate that, Brenda. Thank you very much.
Sure.
All right, Council Hughes.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm trying to put something together here, so just work with me as I figure this out. We talked in the budget, we were even discussing the stabilization, there was more than 974,000 in the account. And like I thought, like I think what we were asking, we were saying how much some committed, and it was like 4 million or something. And last year, when we transferred all the money over, plus the money for the, the COVID relief, I think our total was around 9 million. So how did it fall so much? I'm just, I'm trying to figure out how we got to this number. I realize you mentioned all those are traditional items, but like we were at 9 million, weren't we at this time last year? And I know we put some towards the budget this year, but we didn't put 8 million dollars towards it. So can you just help me figure out how we, where we got from there to here?
And I can speak to that.
Expand on that, Ann? Yeah, thank you.
And that's a good question. The, so we did take the COVID most funding and apply 2.5 million into the, for the 222 budget, and there is, we have committed three, around 3.2 million in the COVID most funding. So that's why we did end up committing it for future use for tax stabilization. So that's a good question. We have changed that and that is committed. So that's why you're seeing that change.
So we were at nine, and then we hit the 2.5, and then 3.2, and then plus the motions. Because if we did not return the waste to energy, we would have been in the hole, right? That's what I'm seeing here, like.
And the, yeah.
And that's, that's, we've never been like that before. We've always had millions. And we even had millions in November when we were discussing how much in the stabilization reserve. So again, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to put this all together as to how we got from there to here, because normally we have 4 million and we add 3 million or 2 million plus. I've never seen it go to a negative number had we not unfunded the waste energy.
And it's really the changes due, what we were looking at before, you're probably looking at even the total balance and then due to the uncommitted. But you're right, we had a change in practice due to that COVID most funding. We did commit that, but yeah, you're right. The balance is, we have not seen this balance this low in the uncommitted portion of the stabilization reserve, so that is why we're recommending the full amount to build of that reserve.
Okay, I got it. And I agree. I, we're in desperation mode here on this one fund here, and since it's so widely used for various emergencies. Yeah, I agree. But I don't, I don't know if it's possible as an IR, just to kind of give us a snapshot again of how we went from where we were 12 months ago to how we got to where we are today, just so we can see where the, where the numbers fell. That would be quite helpful. I know this is uncommitted, so we may be committing it and haven't spent it yet, and it may come back later. But if you guys could do that, I'll send it to information question. I just, it would just help us to figure out how we got to where we are today, because it's great that we have the surplus, but if we didn't have the surplus, and if we hadn't unfunded the waste of energy, we would have no money in that account. We'd actually be overdrawn. So I, I just, I just need to figure out how we did that, because I think that, I think that we've been taking this, this, this fund for granted, that it would always have millions in there, and that we had a comfortable cushion before we added this, this. So these numbers are a surprise for us. So I'll put the information. Can you do that? That's great.
It's a good request. Sometimes we take that reserve for granted, right? Seeing no more questions. Oh, Council Mackay? Okay, no, we're good.
If there's no more questions, I'll make the motion that the 2021 municipal operating surplus be transferred to the stabilization reserve.
All right, accept that. Anything to comment?
No, just good discussion, because I mean, as being pointed out by Council Hughes and yourself and myself and staff, I mean, surplus funds are our sole source of funding of the stabilization reserve. And we can see that, you know, we were slowly, slowly starting to draw down on that right into dangerous levels, because we do need this reserve fund and we do utilize it the most. So this is a prudent decision, and really the only, as I said, the only, only source of funding for the stabilization reserve. So I think this is appropriate.
All right, anyone else have any comments? Seeing no hands up, I will call for the vote. Voting's closed, and that passes unanimously, and that was the last thing on our agenda. So meeting adjourned at 3:21 PM. Nice.
See you, everybody.
Yeah, feel better, Wes.
All right, thank you.